Okay, I am going to call this meeting to order. It is Monday, June 8th. I think I heard a little echo, now it stopped. Okay, Monday, June 8th, and it was the last day of classes, so it's been a busy and hectic day around the district. And we are the only people in this room. So everybody's out enjoying the gorgeous weather tonight. The first, we have an agenda, and the first item is the call to order, followed by the approval of the agenda, superintendent's report. And then we have four discussion items. The first one is a summer programs update, then our strategic plan update, our preliminary fiscal 2015-16 budget update, and then policy development second reading on our new policy, 427 workload limits for certain special education teachers. I think if we don't hear anything, we'll probably approve them in that order, although we may want to switch the orders of items A and B depending on availability of the presenters. Then we have the action agenda, which is the approval of new policy, 427 workload limits for certain special education teachers, communications and transmittals, and adjournment. It is a relatively short agenda tonight. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So move by Bruce.
Sir.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries, our agenda is approved. And the first item is the superintendent's report. So Superintendent Metz.
Good evening, board members. I just wanted to look back and celebrate graduation, which took place last Thursday night. Out on the stadium, it was a beautiful night, the weather cooperated. We had over 300 students graduate. I believe it was 319 students who graduated last Thursday night. The stands were full on both sides, hardly a seat to be had, which was great. And that whole graduation event will soon be available to view on our school district website. I wanted just to take a moment to thank some special people who work very hard behind the scenes to make the graduation what it is. Principal Scott Myers and Assistant Principal Carrie Schweetering do a lot of work preparing for that night. And their secretaries, Carol Johnson, the high school principal's secretary, who is retiring this year, and Eileen Lee, who's the assistant principal's secretary, do a lot of the behind-the-scenes work. They start many months in advance ordering all the things that are necessary for that night. And then finally, the senior counselor, this year it was Laura King. Our senior counselor rotates year by year at the high school. They do a great deal of work with all of the seniors. They start meeting with the seniors the first day of school, their senior year, even before that, of course, and track the graduation credits and the grades of all the students and make sure that the students and their families clearly know what has to be accomplished by the end of the year for them to graduate. And as they get closer and closer to that end of the year, they are working very diligently with the students who are on the cusp of either graduating or not graduating. And many people don't get to see that process, but it's very interesting, time-consuming, emotional, all the things that go into that process to make sure, from the student's point of view, that they have everything in place so that they can graduate. So I just wanted to take a moment to celebrate that great night, last Thursday night, and to pay special thanks to Principal Scott Myers, Assistant Principal Carrie Schweetering, secretaries Carol Johnson and Eileen Lee, and Senior Counselor Laura King.
Well, good, I think we'd all agree, it was a wonderful evening. We'll move on to our discussion items. And would we like to do the strategic plan update first? All right. I should've, when I said we were the only ones in the room, the board and the superintendent, but we always have a number of our administrators here. And we have a special guest here, too, with one of our administrators. So Sarah's gonna go first and do the strategic plan update. And we're thrilled to have a chance to see him, so that's okay.
It's always, always in motion, so. So, we are here tonight to talk about the strategic plan, years 2015 to 2020, which, I'm still having a hard time saying that, but it's the future, isn't it? So, we are knee-deep in strategic planning. Our action teams have been meeting, our core team's been meeting. We have upwards of 75 administrators, teachers, staff, and most importantly, community members, who are working on this effort. So, it's big, it's really big, it's really fun. A couple of your board members are on the teams as well. They can give you kind of their firsthand experience in a little bit. Excuse me. What's most impressive is that we're working towards consensus. So what that means is not everybody has to leave the room. We don't do this by vote, we do this by a high-five of everybody's in. So, we're all learning the phrase, "I'm all in." People are probably saying it in their sleep, those who are on the teams. "I'm all in." So we're all in on our strategic planning effort. The really exciting news, and you can mark your calendar now, May 22nd, we will present it to the board. June, sorry, June 22nd, we'll present it to the board. See, I'm too buried in my calendar. This won't be a document that sits on the shelf. Many people have experienced that before with strategic plans. Superintendent Metz has guaranteed that this will be our work as we move forward, so much so that we're setting meetings this summer to really figure out how we can already begin to implement this fall. So we're really excited about that. Really wanted to also bring another point forward tonight as we talk about the strategic plan, and that's the big focus on equity. And I'll turn this over. Not quite sure how much you can see the strategies piece, but there's a focus on equity throughout the plan, so much so that Superintendent Metz also had an equity advisory team meet. And this was a group of people from throughout the district, came together, looked at the strategies, the mission, the outcomes, as well as some of the draft statements we were moving forward, to look at them and say, "Are we addressing equity? Are we addressing learning for all learners in the district?" And so that's an important piece, and something that even our strategic plan consultants said, "That's different. That's special in St. Louis Park. That's a lens we don't usually see." So we're really excited about that, and that's a piece that you'll really want to look for as we move this work forward. So, one other thing I wanted to do tonight was explain to you a little bit about the strategies. In front of you, you see the handout, all of you had it in your packet, and they run along the left-hand column here on the handout, if our TV folks can zoom in on that. Three strategies, four strategies, all approved by consensus of the core team. Not gonna read them to you, because they get a little lengthy, but these are important, because these really set the overriding umbrella statements for how we're gonna do our work. So you'll want to look at those and pay special attention to those. I know that there's some question, we've heard this already from our teams, about strategy one, where one of the part of the phrase is, "We will continually evaluate and systemically implement student outcomes." And what the question has come up over and over again is, "How exactly do you implement an outcome?" And you might be having that at home tonight as a question. Even many of our team members had that question, going back and forth between core team and action team. So the answer is relatively simple, and that's that you implement an outcome by putting a system in place. So it's more than just embedding the standards, it's supporting the work and making sure that the work has broad-based tentacles across the system. So, we're planning the curriculum, it's being taught, it's being assessed, all systemically. So hopefully that addresses your questions tonight on that. And with that, I just wanted to open up to any questions you might be having so far as we move through this process.
Hey, board members, do you have questions? No, you answered the one I had.
Very good.
Anybody else, or comments from the board members who are participating on the strategic planning team? I know Ken is also, is on one of the action teams, but Bruce and Karen, you're on the core team? No obligation, but if you've got something to add. Karen, first.
So, I'm serving on both the core team and the Community Collaboration Action Team. And the process of consensus building is, I remember talking to Rob about this, that this was gonna be daunting. I said, "No, no, no, engaging, important." Well, you come out of that meeting at nine o'clock at night, and yeah, you're exhausted, because your brain has been so focused on every nuance of every word has to be addressed, and everyone around the table has to agree. And so, I really admire the dedication of all the people involved in making this plan, because this is going to be our work for the next five years, and we are going to do this work together. So I'm very pleased with the process, and it's been, it's been a ton of work. And thank you for everybody who's been involved.
Bruce?
I would second that. I would also, there are three things I'd like to say. One is our facilitation has been excellent. That has been a strong part of these meetings. It takes a good facilitator to get 30 people in a room to agree just to show up. And they're, this group shows up, they're enthusiastic, and they're fun. The second part is on the equity piece, and that is, if you know what equity is, that's great. I don't know if anyone has a definition of equity here, but we defined it back in 2007. And a lot of us on this board, our names are signed to that document. And it is excellent that that is being so integrated into this entire process. And the way I like to speak to equity is, is the teacher definition of equity. When you circle up the kids, and everybody throws their shoes in the middle of the circle, and so the teacher passes out the shoes to the kids. And each kid gets two shoes, and they look at each other, and obviously, somebody's unhappy. Kids know what equity is, and that is, if you happen to be a little girl with two big shoes from some guy, that you discover, if you all have two shoes, that's equality, but it's not equity. You know equity, because the kids know when it's fair, and they know when they're happy. So, this group has been wonderful about that, and they, for the most part, have been pretty happy with the process. And the last thing is consensus. Rob takes a risk when he does this. We did this back five years ago, when we did this team. Deborah took a risk, and I've seen it work. And I, my military background says I'm not a big consensus guy. I'm a believer after all this. And this has really been fun to see 30 people around a table say, "I'm in." So, it's been a great group, and I've enjoyed it.
Great. Any other questions or comments? I think my experience last time around was fantastic, and I think we really appreciate our community's willingness to participate, both our community within district employees and our community beyond, that are putting the extra time, energy, engagement, daunting tasks, whatever the word is. It can be anyone and all of those at the same time. So it's been a great experience. And Sarah, we look forward to further discussions, and we appreciate your extra effort in coming back here tonight.
You're welcome, thank you, Chair Spicer. When we come back on June 22nd, we will also be recognizing those who have served on the core team and the action team. Because it is summer, I'm not quite sure how many can actually attend to be recognized, but we'll make sure we acknowledge everybody who's had a hand in this process, and certainly want to do a shout-out to our community, because this started way back in February, if you remember, with the World Cafe. And so, we've had a lot of input and a lot of hands on this plan as we've gone through the process. So, we're really excited about what it moves forward.
Don't run, I think we've got a question from the end of the row here.
Yes, I've been debating whether to say this out loud, and I'm going to, because then I'll feel better about consensus if I'm the minority opinion. I can live with that, but I will have said it out loud. And that is, I think the core values are outstanding. The one thing that's just driving me nuts is I want to edit out the word "that" from every one of them, because I think it's superfluous, and it kind of takes a bit away from the value itself. I've seen another strategic plan that starts out, "Core values, we believe that," and then they list everything. I know you've been a long way through the process, this may be way too late, but I'm gonna say it, because then I'll feel better when I read this for the next five years, having said it.
Yep, I will take your friendly edit, and I will take it back to the core team, because these were agreed upon by consensus. And so, I'm willing to bet that they will listen to your friendly edit and probably look on it favorably, so. I don't see that being a problem as we move forward.
The grammarian in me agrees, but isn't quite as obsessed about it being a problem, so.
And I'm confident that I can make it go through, because I don't own these, these existed well before me as well. So I don't own the writing, so I'm not terribly vested. Also, the grammarian in me agrees with you. So, I think we can make all of us very happy at the same time.
And we are a district full of wonderful English teachers, and I think, Nancy, if we build a little consensus around this, we can get this done.
Ah, the St. Louis Park way.
Exactly.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for the presentation. We'll now move on to item A under the discussion items, which is the summer programs update, from Lisa Green, our Director of Community Education.
Thank you, members of the board. The purpose of this presentation is just to let you know what's going on this summer. We are going to have the whole crew back in the fall to talk about what happened, and the highlights, and any data that we have, and that kind of thing. This is just merely to let you know what's going to be going on here this summer. First, I'm gonna talk about our targeted services and our credit recovery programs. We call these our academic summer school programs. And their mission is to ensure students graduate on time by providing credit recovery opportunities for students in ninth through 12th grade, and to offer skill enhancement for students in grades kindergarten through eight who are at risk of not graduating on time. And we are able to provide these services for free because of funding that we get from the Alternative Learning Statute. And that is, the district gets reimbursement for seat time for our K through eight targeted services program, and for the 912 credit recovery and online learning programs. These are not parent choice programs. In order to qualify, a student must meet certain graduating incentive criteria or need the credits, and a continual learning plan must be on file. And the students that are allowed to participate in this program are across, at each site, they have to be a cross-section of at-risk learners, not heavily dominated by any one category. So it can't be like all special ed or all English-language learners. But we, certainly, we, students who are English-language learners, special ed students, or students who, and this is where we do a lot of recruiting in these two areas, one year or more behind in coursework or not meeting proficiency, and then, of course, credit recovery for the ninth through 12th graders. So the details, Summer Learning Academy is going to be at the, pre-K through five will be at Aquila Elementary School this year. And then, of course, the middle school will be at the middle school. And the dates there are July 6th through August 6th, and Monday through Thursday, 8 to noon. And the high school programs, credit recovery and online learning, will of course be at the high school. And different this year, we're starting them at different times. So we are not having those, all of them starting at the same time. The high school's starting next week. And the reason why is because that is better for the high school, for them to come in and get their credits and get that taken care of right away. Where it's better for our other learners to start a little later and then finish up summer school closer to the beginning of the school year. And again, this year, at Aquila, we are going to have two pre-K classrooms. We started that last year with our Pathways Two money, and we decided that we wanted to do that again. So these are, it's going to be for students, and we're in the process of recruiting. I think we have like 25 students right now who have not had any kind of a preschool experience, or they've been in one of our programs, and we have determined that they need additional time on learning before they start kindergarten. So these are year-before-kindergarten students. And of course, as usual, breakfast and a snack will be included at no cost for pre-K through eight, and then we have transportation for pre-K through eight students and K through 12 choice students.
Lisa?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
On that, the pre-K are the ones at risk. How big of a class is that?
Well, we have two classrooms, and in each classroom there is a teacher and para. And each class is, well, we take, we divide it in two. So last year, we had 18 students, so we had nine in each class. This year, we'll probably have like 12. But we would max it out at 14.
So.
Yes, keep going, yeah, keep asking.
So, you had that last year. Did you see any results from that with those kids starting kindergarten this year?
We did poll the kindergarten teachers, and there were some, some of the teachers did say that they felt that the students who came were more prepared, they were actually able to sit still, they knew how to walk through a lunch line and do all those kinds of things. There's one little story that we have, there's, there was a little boy last year who like cried, like every day for two weeks, he would come and cry. And then by the end of the five weeks, though, he was not, he wasn't crying anymore. And then when he started kindergarten, he was like, ready to go with kindergarten. So, you know, it's hard, because we can't compare them like if they didn't do it. So, you know, it's kind of hard, but we, I just, we just know that if they get some time on learning like that, in the environment that they will be in when they start kindergarten, so they're in a elementary school, they're taking the big bus, they're, you know, going through the lunch line, they're having an experience like they would have in kindergarten. So, they're just more prepared.
And Superintendent Metz is just noting down interest in getting some results on that. I agree, it's gonna be hard to do anything that would stand up to any research standards, but it is worth trying to figure out what we can measure on special programs like that.
And we, yeah, we'll easily be able to measure that, because we have, we have the data now, and we have the names of the kids.
And it would be interesting on, I know we're not gonna get 100% of the ones that are at risk, but to compare them to the ones that were at risk, that did attend, that would be a nice comparison to see.
We could see what we can do about that. We'll talk with Prachi about that and see if there's something we can set up to make that comparison.
If there are students you recruit who choose not to participate.
We did have those, too, yeah, we did have a number of those last year.
Well, that could be the comparison there.
Yeah.
It's not pure, but it's worth looking at.
Are there any other questions? Because I'm just gonna go on to talk a little bit about some of the other programs that we have going on this summer. Then we have extended school year, of course, ESY through our special ed program. And those dates are July 6th through July 23rd, Monday through Thursday, at Aquila. And this is, again, also, the students are recruited, so their case manager must have determined eligibility for each student according to their IEP. Now, moving on, we have our choice programs, where parents and students can sign up, and you have the summer catalog in front of you. And so these, all these programs are available to anybody who would like to take them. So we have, of course, our Community Education, Summer Learning and Play, which is eight weeks this year, and starting next week and going through August 6. So we're gonna have three weeks of that, because the 4th of July is, I believe, is on a Friday this year, Saturday? Right, so, yeah, so we can, so we could do that this year. And so we're having classes during that week. And so, we have three weeks before the academic summer school. So we have kids that, all the kids in that targeted services program will be able to register for three weeks of targeted services for free this year. And those classes, they go, they're over PSI, and they're from like 9:00 to 3:30, but they're in two-hour blocks, and most of them are in the morning. And then just other things we have going on. Of course, we have Kids Place, our childcare program, every day, Monday through Friday, 6:30 to 8:00 at Central. And then, we also have a number of other early learning programs going on through the end of July, and you'll see on page 19 of your summer catalog, we have early childhood family education classes, we have creative play, preschool, and we have an adventure club, week-long camps for preschoolers this summer, and a new program where kids can just come in and drop in and play. And we also have a full complement of aquatics and kid dance and gymnastics programs as well, and you'll find those listed on pages 20 through 23. And does anybody have any other questions?
So it's pretty clear, if a child wants something to do this summer, there is something to do.
There is stuff to do.
Just in case anybody thinks the district shuts down over the summer, this is evidence that it does not.
Nope.
Changes.
All of our, just about, almost all of our buildings are being used this summer. So, yeah, we just stay busy all summer, all year round, we're busy.
Code breakers, that one sounds fun. Okay, well, if there's no questions from anybody on the board, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we look forward to hearing about a busy summer and hearing what the impact was.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the third item, which is our preliminary fiscal 2016 budget update, and that is from Sandy Saline, our Director of Business Services. And board members, I think you have some updated papers at your desk.
Yes, and this is a preliminary look. You will be getting another look at this at the next, at the last board meeting this year, which it has to be approved by that point. But this gives you the opportunity to get a brief look at it beforehand and be able to answer any questions. And we're still looking at it from an administrative point of view, but we don't anticipate there to be any changes to the budget, just maybe some cosmetic changes to the budget book. And with the, the beginning of the budget process, we came up with budget assumptions. The board did approve budget assumptions with the Finance Advisory Committee. These were creating a weighted average daily membership of 5,100 pupil units, which drives a lot of our revenue, such as our general education revenue. General education formula allowance increase of 1.5%. We're hearing it's going to be more. So during the next look at this, when it gets approved, we might be changing that to a 2% from what we're hearing from the government. We did, the Finance Advisory Committee, we had discussion regarding the special education revenue to keep it stable to the current year. But you will see on the bottom, when we get to it, that we are going to be decreasing that by 200,000 to be more of a conservative approach, thinking that it might be going down slightly. So, we'll get to that in a moment, but we're gonna probably change that assumption, and the Finance Advisory Committee did have that discussion for me to look at it further. Sellers and benefits at a level negotiated according to our financial situation. And they did recommend to increase our severance reserves by $1 million, which is going to bring us more in line with what our liability is, and have that reserve available for that piece. During, after that has been approved, myself and administration had discussions regarding what kind of changes potentially we want to make to those assumptions, and so there is some additions and changes to those budget assumptions. There is gonna be some temporary staffing for fiscal year 2016 only, two counselors, one of which is going to be funded by a grant from Park Nicollet. A .4 for a Jarvis grant, and a .6 teacher position, I believe this was a kindergarten coaching position. We are going to be using our curriculum assigned reserve to fund a curriculum coordinator, and a .5 ATSS grant, understanding that we are hoping to get this grant available to pay for this. And I don't know if you can answer that, Rob, what that is, or, I know Carrie isn't here.
Yes, so the ATSS grant, we applied for the grant from the Department of Education, and the idea behind the ATSS is that you put in preventive maintenance, you support students so that fewer students are ending up getting referred into special education. So the, the, the process here is that if you provide the support, when, before a student gets referred for special education, you can reduce the number of students that end up needing special education. And we've applied for that grant, we have a good chance of getting it. And if we do, we have to have a, one of the requirements is we have to have someone to facilitate the funds and manage the programming that goes with it.
Thank you. And we.
Sandy, I'm sorry, I should.
That's okay.
Can I say one more thing about that? We needed to hire that person now to make sure we have the best possible person in line to coordinate ATSS if we get it. If we get the grant, the grant's gonna cover the cost of the. If we get the grant, the grant's going to cover the cost of the coordinator and the school district won't have to cover the cost. We, in this document, are saying, we're putting the money up front, we're covering the cost so we can hire the person now. And if we don't get the grant for some reason, we'll use this halftime position for a different purpose. But I'm fairly confident we will get the grant, and if we do, the district won't have to incur the cost of paying the coordinator.
Thank you. We are also have some temporary staff that we had put in for 2015 that we are going to create permanent staffing for 2016, being a .33 reading intervention and a 1.0 ESL. And as I mentioned before, we're going to decrease the special education revenue of 200,000, make it more conservative based on things that the business managers have been hearing regarding special ed revenue. We are increasing the operating capital budgets, 450,000 to be spent from the Elliott sale funds.
Sandy and Chair Switzer, Jim asked me what the $450,000 from the Elliott sale is going to be used for. The largest part of it is going to be used to fund the upgrade of the stadium. We applied for a grant from Hennepin County to upgrade the stadium, got the grant. So a chunk of that money is coming from us and another portion is coming from Hennepin County. So of that 450,000 that you see, most of it is funding the, our portion of the stadium upgrade, the other part is funding new sound system in the auditorium at the high school.
Okay. And now I'm going to go through the, based on those budget assumptions and what we carry over from year to year with the expenditures that we had in place in fiscal year 2015. This is a comparison showing the fiscal year 2015 revised to current year. But looking at the fiscal year 2016 proposed, like I said, which isn't expected to be approved tonight, but will be approved at the next board meeting, you're, you're seeing a $59 million general education fund revenue total with 56 million for the general operating fund revenue. And I'm just going to let you look through the rest of them to basically, you know, this is something that is, brings not only the general fund revenue, but also the school nutrition, community ed. Community ed is based on what revenues are available through, through estimated fees, but also through state funding and levy funding. School nutrition is, is pretty much the same, it's based on fees as well as state and federal funding. We got our bond projects, we didn't put in any budgets last year for our revenue, but we certainly have the reserve fund balance in place based on what we put in our audit. Our debt service funding is based on the revenue that we are receiving from levies for, for the debt that we owe for principal and interest for our bonds. Technology levy is something that we levy every year for our technology levy, or otherwise known as the capital projects levy, and bringing our total revenue at 75, a little over 75 mil. And looking at our expenditures, this is based, like I said, based on the budget assumptions as well as carrying forward what we are carrying forward from the prior year with the best estimates that we have available. The general fund is 55 mil. Total general fund, which includes capital and health and safety as well as alternative teacher compensation, is almost 59 mil, a little over 58 mil. School nutrition is, is in, in line with what revenue sources came in as well as community education. Bond projects is spending down that reserve and continuing on with the projects that we have as deferred maintenance items. Debt service is the actual principal and interest payments that are expected for the bond payments that we have for this coming year. Technology levy, we are keeping that stable at this point as an estimate, bringing our total at 80, a little, almost $83 million for total expenditures. And then what we do is we take all of that information and break it down into the different reserve funds that we have to have to put in as assigned or restricted, as well as the general fund unreserved. And the general fund unreserved is pretty much remaining stable. We did increase the assigned reserve by the 1 million for the severance reserve, like I said, to meet the liabilities that we have in place at this point and better represents those liabilities, as well as we did have those curriculum reserve expenditures that we are decreasing that reserve for, for curriculum. And you'll see the staff development, health and safety reserve, as well as the basic skills, were just remaining stable at this point. The health and safety is going up as a increased deficit, but that's something that makes itself up in future years. We have identified projects before that we actually get the levy for, but we always make up for that in future years to come, which brings that negative balance down to a, a zero. You will see in the operating capital under the sale of the Elliott building, we are keeping those funding separate, or that money separate from the operating capital. And we will, you do see that decrease in, for that 450,000 that we increased our budgets. The food service is remaining pretty stable, slight increase is expected, community ed stable as well. Debt service, we had a planned decrease to keep our levies down the previous year. And the bond projects, we're spending that down by using the bond projects to deplete that balance. So with that, that's what I have to present tonight unless there's any questions.
Questions? Nancy.
Yes, Sandy, I must not be, maybe my brain is not engaging. But what I'm seeing here is a revenue, which is the money we get in it, and I round this off at 75 million, and I'm seeing a budget of what we're going to pay out at 82 million. So I read that as we're paying 7 million out that we're not taking in.
There's reserves in place too. So I guess, which one are you referring to? I guess, you know, in total, are you talking about the 75 mil and the 82 million in total?
Yeah, usually I see something at the very bottom where it all lines up and it balances out, and I'm not seeing that on the summary page.
A lot of that is at bond projects. A lot of that is at bond projects, probably. And, and what, what it is, is we have, yeah, yeah, yeah. And we have the reserve in place to pay for that.
And so the reserve's in place and it doesn't show up in the revenue side of the budget?
Right.
Because we already have it in place.
Right, because it's already in the reserve.
And then can you just tell me what, since we used to talk about an unreserved general fund balance, and I don't see anything labeled that on this page.
Yeah, that's the general fund up on top here. That would be the unassigned.
It says assigned next to it, which-
Oh, that's, yeah, the bottom piece, the general fund, I can certainly put unassigned on it.
If you can just make that clearer, just-
Absolutely.
-because of the past history, it would be very helpful to me and perhaps others.
I can do that.
Other questions? Well, Nancy's the only one with questions, so your turn again.
Yes. Just my general question, maybe this is for Rob. In this budget, is there any impact that we should know about on class size or on programming, add-ons, detractions, something that, I don't want any surprises in the fall, so?
Yes, if you look at the second page, the page that Sandy showed first, the administrative additions and changes, this is the one that I would like to take a moment just to run down and highlight. The two counselors are both elementary counselors, they're sometimes called Sparks counselors. They were funded for three, actually four years now out of a grant. That grant has gone away. And those two counselors were at great risk of not being retained. But Park Nicollet came along and came to the rescue and said, if you bring those two counselors back, we'll pay for one of them. So the two counselors are showing up there as a temporary addition because I'm not committing long-term, but I'm committing next year for sure because of Park Nicollet's partnership. Sarah Thompson is here, she deserves great credit for brokering this arrangement between Park Nicollet and the school district so that we could have our two elementary Sparks counselors. The next two items are, again, not going into the long-term budget because they're somewhat temporary. We're, we've joined up with a grant process through Purdue University to bring a different way of creating classrooms over to Susan Lindgram. It's going to have quite a bit of benefit in a variety of ways. But that requires a coordinator, and it's a four-year commitment. So the .4 Jarvis grant coordinator, that's the purpose of that, so that we have someone to manage that whole process. The .6 teacher position is a kindergarten first grade coach. This year, one of the things we did that was the most successful probably of anything in the school district was all-day K. And in two weeks, Carrie Ross is going to be here to give you an update on the progress or the success of our all-day kindergarten curriculum. I can't help but tell you, I'll let the cat out of the bag, that our goal was to have 80% of our kindergartners reading at grade level by the end of kindergarten, kindergarten reading at grade level, and we surpassed that. Or I would say the students and teachers surpassed that. One of the reasons they did is because we funded a coach for the teachers. It's not just going out and finding best practice, which we did, training the teachers, which we did, buying the necessary materials, which we did, but having a coach be available to literally go into every kindergarten room in St. Louis Park at least once every other week to check in with the teachers, support the teachers, see what they need, see what's not working well. That coaching, I'm convinced, made a huge difference. So we're expanding that to first grade this year. We've done the same process with first grade where we've gone out on field trips, we've researched the best possible first grade programming. Our first grade teachers have all spent time in our kindergarten classes, watching the kindergarten students they're going to be accepting next year. Kindergarten task force changed the entire makeup of what, or first grade task force changed the entire makeup of what first grade instruction is going to look like next year. And so now we need a coach for them. So the same coach, Kelly Etienne is her name, by the way, is going to be moving back and forth between the kindergarten rooms and the first grade rooms. And with that .6 position, she'll be able to be in every kindergarten and first grade room in St. Louis Park at least once every other week to support those teachers. So I think it's our best opportunity to make a huge difference in the reading proficiency especially, but also math of our young students. So far, so good. So those are listed as temporary because they're not going to be needed in a few more years. The curriculum assigned reserve, we're going to dip into that a little bit to hire another temporary position, we're saying two years, maybe three, of a coordinator to assist Carrie Ross. We need to make sure that our standards are placed in every curriculum area correctly. And as the strategic plan is going to say, we're going to implement standards, which means not just that they're placed, but that the teachers receive the training, the materials and the support they need to make those standards become real. And Carrie can't do that all by herself, there's just too much to do and too little time. So we're going to have someone help her for a couple of years to get us caught up. The ATSS grant coordinator I already described, but if we get that grant, many parents will be familiar with our elementary support systems, sometimes we call them tier two. Reading intervention is the best-known support system in our elementary school to help kids who are not reading yet at grade level. If we get this ATSS grant, we're going to be able to increase the size of our support systems in our elementary school by about five staff members across the district. And so it's a significant amount of money, and the grant requires someone to coordinate that effort. And as I said earlier, if we get the grant, we, the grant will pay for the coordinator. But we needed to hire the best person, and so we took a little risk and are using district money to, we've already hired the coordinator and get them in place and ready to go. And then the temporary additions in reading and ESL, those are actually additions we added this year, we're just making them permanent. So these are temporary becoming permanent. Our number of students in, needing ESL support is increasing, and we needed to add more staff. We added it halfway through the year, and this just means they're going to stay for a long time. So I think all of those things people will notice as necessary and helpful improvements.
Anything else? Okay, well, thank you for the summary, and we will have the actual budget on the 22nd for approval.
That's correct.
I, I suppose, assuming that the state actually passes the budget agreement that they've reached by then, but-
Absolutely.
Thank you. Our last discussion item is the policy development, the second reading of New Policy 427 on workload limits for special education teachers. So second reading, we've had this for a discussion, and Tammy Reynolds, our Director of Special Education, is there anything we, that's been changed in the policy since the last time?
No changes since the last time we talked, with the exception that the note portion was taken off the top as you had suggested we take care of. And it really does focus on those students who get 60% or less of their day in special education. So students who, that, that defines the amount of time they receive special education services, which the lion's share of our students are 60% or less of their day in special education. So it's really about creating equitable workloads across multiple districts in the state.
So any questions from board members? This will be up for action, actually is the next item on the agenda. All right, I don't see any, oh.
Joe. Just a reminder, where, where is this coming from? Is this MSBA thing, is this coming from the state, or?
A new statute, I believe, is what's requiring this. So MSBA has given us a model policy.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that was the last of our discussion agenda, and I'll move on to the one and only item on our action agenda, which is the approval of New Policy 427 workload limits for certain special education teachers. And it's recommended that school board approve the second reading of Policy 427 workload limits for certain special education teachers as presented. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Nancy. Seconded by Ken. Any further discussion? Then all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Communications and transmittals. I can't believe it. Ken?
Okay, this weekend, we had the opportunity to have a track athlete, was second place in the state finals in the 800 meter. It was Mac, well, actually Chris Trotter, I always call him Matt, Mac. But he's had, he's a wonderful student and a wonderful athlete, who's really dedicated to both track and, track and soccer. And I'm trying to motivate him to be a football player so he can be a three, a three-sport athlete. But I think with this, this last weekend, he's not going to do it. So he's a junior, and he'll be a senior next year, and he's, has wonderful things in front of him.
Anybody else? I'm still proud to say we're a school where three athletes, three-sport athletes still exist.
Yes.
Yes. Nancy?
Yeah, I, today was the last day of school, so it's, it feels like, no offense to anybody in the room here, but it feels like the energy left the room. You can just feel the difference coming into the board meeting, although we have one, one young person with us that we're really grateful for. And so as part of those year-end activities, I went to the, the pop choir senior recital. And it's just one of, one of my favorite things to do at the end of the year. And those students, the seniors pick their song, they go out on stage, they, they sing their hearts out, they're just as vulnerable as you can be, and they're absolutely wonderful. And I've been told that some of them have just improved their singing greatly in the four years that they've been in the, in the high school part. And it's just really quite a treat and very emotional on many levels, and lovely farewell by their, by their teacher. So I, I thought the mic system wasn't too bad for that night, so I was going to ask you, when are we going to get the upgrade? I will say this, in the, in the cafeteria, there were some real issues, and I don't know if that can be addressed, but on the audit, on the stage, it seemed to flow pretty well for the night.
Should be in June, I'm looking at Sandy. Sandy, have you heard the latest on the auditorium sound system upgrade?
I believe it's June, it's going to probably flow into July as far as getting it started. I believe it's June, it's going to probably flow into July as far as getting it started. We're going to have a July meeting to hopefully get this approved. Unfortunately, weren't able to get it done in June, but we're going to get rolling on it probably really more so in July, but get everything finalized as far as documents for the board to approve.
I think you're, you might be talking about the swimming pools.
I'm sorry, I am. The auditorium!
The auditorium. I, I'm following the, I'm following the email chain.
There's too many things going on.
I'm following the email chain between Tom Bravo, our facilities manager, and Dave Farber from Farber Sound, and I believe it's going to be yet in June. They are very, very busy in the summer, the sound companies running all over the place from concerts to concerts to concerts. So he's trying to get this squeezed in. They're not only replacing the sound system in the auditorium, but they're also doing the sound system on the stadium as part of the stadium upgrade. So he's hopefully, hoping to get both of them done this summer.
That's what I was hoping, that they'd be in place by the fall, but the ideal.
He knows more than I do.
Sandy, you have a date?
I can tell you the check was cut on Friday for 50% deposit, and I know Tom Bravo, Tom Marble, and the team from Farber Sound are meeting this week to get us on their docket so we can get going.
Sounds precise. Bruce, and then Karen.
I just want to let you know that my piano teacher is the one who accompanies a lot of the kids in the presentation, and he was absolutely adamant about the sound system. He said, we need something done, and so we're watching that very closely, just so we know, Sandy. We appreciate that. I want to give a shout out to the community for what they have done in the budget process. It appears that when this special session passes, the education, K-12 education, we will have 2 and 2 on the formula. By that, I mean 2% each year for next year and the following year for the biennium, and this is powerful for us. As Sandy mentioned, we budgeted 1 and 1/2 and 1 and 1/2, just to be conservative. This gives us a little more flexibility, and it is a powerful thing. It is much closer to the governor's budget, and I give him a lot of credit. But the shout out to the community is, I appreciate everyone who contacted legislators, everyone who testified, whether you testified or not, that contact to our legislators, your voice is heard and you do make a difference. Now, step two is to please get back to our legislators and thank them for what has been done here, because this 2 and 2 is a big deal even when we have a multi-billion dollar surplus.
After they pass it.
After they pass it.
Carrie.
Thank you so much. So I always like to talk about children-first assets, and asset 29 honesty was really on display. Last week, on June 3rd, at the middle school, we did a We Need Youth Focus Group session with Pachi Mukherjee, Andy Ewald, Charlie McChesney, Lisa Green, and some parents, including myself and Joan Monacati. And the kids were very forthright and honest about why they engage or not engage in enrichment activities that we're offering, and they had really great insights so that as we go forward as adults, we're having kid input with thinking about programming. And so I really, I really commend the kids who participated in that process, they, they really did a great job. Another group of kids who did a great job were the Peter Hobart fifth graders for their IB exhibition, and that was on Tuesday, May 2nd. Boy, these are kids who are fabulous critical thinkers, and they, they really displayed their knowledge and in-depth research, and I was very impressed. I too wanted to congratulate Mac, I got to see that race because my son was one of his teammates, and Mom, I gotta go, I gotta go, fine. And, and it worked out so perfect because I was at the Parents United Legislative Update that morning, and we got done with that meeting, and I could stop by Hamlin and see the race. So Bruce was talking about equity in shoes, and the key message that Mary Sekoni pointed out was, you know what, we just need shoes, please. We have legislators who think we need socks, or we need support something, or we need heel inserts, but what we really need is shoes, and that's the formula. And if the, my personal opinion is if we could have a decent formula and special ed fully funded, every district in the state would be okay. But we're still not there yet because if you think about how school funding was actively defunded for a 10-year purpose, yeah, 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 we gave you 4% on the formula, but they also took away 4% on this and that and the other thing, so we netted out at zero several years in a row. So we're making progress, we're getting better. I'm anxious for them to schedule the special session, get the vote done, and get the formula passed so that we don't have to do any more budget adjustments for the year. And happy summer, everybody, thanks so much.
All right, anything else? I would just remind our board members and our community, the Partacular's coming up before our next board meeting. Our next board meeting is the 22nd, but on that Saturday, the 20th, is the parade, and this year, the board and superintendent are going to participate again, so be on, be somewhere along the parade route so we can wave to you. And I'm not sure if we're going to have pencils, or, yes, we'll have pencils, and we are a school district, remember? So get your personally autographed St. Louis Park pencils at the Partacular Parade. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Bruce, second by, ooh, it's a tie. I think it was Joe. I'll give it to Joe. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, and we're adjourning a little, about 8:06 on Friday, June 8th, or Monday, June 8th. I got to write, Monday, June 8th.